Yeah.
Yeah.
Not sure. Please do your rounds.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, we have our outskirts.
Welcome to our September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-five, people being, Councilwoman. Uh, Kim, would you call the vote please? Councilor Cannon?
Here.
Councilor Colen? Your mayor short here. Councilor Sovereign? Here. Councilor Wreck?
Here.
Here.
Councilor Watson?
Here.
Councilor Marcela?
Here.
You have a call. Thank you so much. Uh, we do have one change to the agenda that will add number five and your next new business. Uh, can you update on the executive session? Has everyone had a chance to review the agenda? We did have an update camp set out this afternoon. The vendor activity was updated for some additional charges that was for the catwalk.
Yes.
Yes, because you'd already approved it. I just forgot to give it her right after we need to approve it. So we just aren't to pay for it, so she just included it in the stat. Is there a, uh, a motion to accept the agenda is presented?
Motion to accept.
Oh, second. It's been written a second to accept the consented agenda. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just a quick question on accounts payable.
Yes.
Uh, the Cook County abatement, do we lean the property for that abatement amount?
Uh, we haven't done it yet, but yes, we can. She won't probably pay, but we'll definitely lean the property.
At some point, if it's sold, though, it will get.
Yes.
We'll get it back, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other discussion?
So I just wanted to draw a record with the amount the catwalk was. Was, there's two of them, they're big, and I just want to say it aloud so that we know that, we know how much.
You grabbed it.
I don't.
Okay.
It was a lot, it was two hundred and seven thousand dollars.
Yes, I, it's big, I, I can grab it.
I'm sorry. Um, this is the older version.
This is a small package.
I found it.
The first one, I have.
Two oh eight, eight two seven point eight nine was one of them, and one oh three, two four seven point four two is the other. So those have been approved, and we'll be signing backups for them.
And they can, uh, the project has committed everybody with the. Thank you. Okay. They go down here. No, they just. Okay, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Hey, um, we have our chair here. How are you?
Good, how are you?
You're training, and I've been missing you.
Yeah, this is day two of training, and it feels like it's been like two weeks. It's just sitting in a chair, listening to presentations with some scenarios.
Yeah.
I much rather be, trust me.
I wish you were here too, very near to check me out the other morning.
With all things so nice, no one's leaving, so.
I know.
You like that? I'm sure there's no place on the self-managed somewhere. There's still plenty of people there.
I feel like dance me jig every time I see you guys pull somebody over.
On your truck.
I see, I figure if I beat my heart to wave that right now.
Please do.
Do you have any feedback on the crosswalks?
I think it's great, I mean, it's, I haven't.
Have you all noticed them?
I have not seen.
You can't help but notice that.
No, it is very attention grabbing, which is great. Uh, I haven't actually seen them in use yet.
I saw it used today.
Did you?
One, there's three people, four people. One had it in front, one had it in the back, they went across with the kids in the middle. I've heard that some people wave them.
Yeah, there's some attention drivers, I definitely see people standing there sometimes just waiting for someone to slow down, so it's supposed to yield to them, but now that they're flagging, it's pretty obvious what they're trying to do.
That is, um, until we get in trouble.
Yeah, well, ask for forgiveness, I mean.
Yeah, that's why I brought to the mayor, we all have to that kind of.
That's the way they're operating, yeah. Yeah.
I think it's wonderful. Any questions for our deputy?
No, I was saying, that, that's all right.
We have a second deputy now that's covering.
Yep, and we are working out the logistics of getting him here, how we're gonna be participating in some council meetings. Just 'cause he starts on Wednesday, so if he comes in on Tuesday, it'd be an automatic, like, three hours overtime. Uh, whether he does anything here or not, aside from just existing.
That's okay, if you can just send us his reports as well.
Yeah, absolutely, there will be, like, so there was a little confusion with, I don't know, right now, August, so.
Yeah, yeah.
August, there was a little confusion on getting something out.
I might have got them, but it wouldn't difference, so I have a problem.
And if it's not, it's, we own all the data, so it's okay.
Sergeant was working on some more stats, and I thought that's what it was, but it might be, the report's off, so I'll forward it to you.
I will say, last month, whatever I looked at, you may have also got it. It was a heavy month last month, I mean, we had some deputies filtering in, we just captured a lot of data. Um, there were some decent calls, or decent investigations that came out of last month, there's some DUIs, some domestics.
Wow.
Um, so, not just good to get that stuff taken care of, but also outstanding training opportunities to, some newer deputies got to handle, and it went towards their checkout phase, and now they're our solo deputies.
Well, that's a good thing.
To the fact that we are catching them, that is a good thing.
Yeah, I, I agree.
Yeah.
We got a lot of, uh, I don't know, where is transient deputies helping us out.
Yeah, no, it's.
For that example, Deputy Reagan, I've seen him for some people.
And he was one of them, so. Deputy Reagan, do you remember which one Deputy Reagan was?
There's two?
No.
Oh.
Well, there's Rego, and there's Reagan. Reagan is the younger looking.
Younger.
Tall, like, also tall.
Younger looking, seems kinda shy.
Oh, he's coming now. But no, he actually just hit solo status last week.
Why, I asked him.
Yeah, and he was doing a lot of work on people being, um, utilizing the office writing reports, and then coming out and running traffic, just 'cause it's a good spot to get a lot of contacts and show that he wants to be by himself and do more.
We appreciate it.
Yeah. He did really good. Uh, Rego there, the last one I had, he just went solo as well. And he got a lot of work down here, and so. It's only a checkout person.
Dressing, they're still dressing up all the parking issues, um, we got a couple, I don't know what happened with that turf.
I drove by.
It's gone.
It's gone now.
But we had a van that was kind of abandoned in the parking lot, and.
Yeah, and we cited it, and it's gone now as well, so.
Yeah, so we're just trying to catch what we, what we can.
The camper's certainly down now.
Yeah, so Sergeant Vale went through, he talked, he took a little bit of a different approach and had success. Uh, I was waiting for a little more signage, and he just went and started talking to people, and I think that was effective enough.
Well, and, uh, parks definitely.
Good, I'm glad, 'cause.
Tell them to stop doing that.
Yeah.
I hear they were driving down the. That's where Noah's, I heard that Noah's Pete had said, go down there.
My first started five years ago, that's where everyone was saying, I think, it's out, and then it was a car.
Yeah, so I, I've noticed it's been pretty nice.
Yeah.
We actually, people started complaining about it.
Sign if we still be good, but the fact that.
I forgot that, I've gotta go, I'm on this.
Uh, the fact that Sergeant Vale, I've heard that he tells these people, yeah, it's also a good city.
And I saw the other day, uh, you, uh, are chatting with people who stick way out in traffic, and some of the white lights? Is that something, 'cause I speak, it reminded me, and all of a sudden, your white lights went on, and then that big old white van thing.
Oh, yeah, no, so I don't have, just, I wonder if it's where your son was hitting it maybe? 'Cause it would have been, the movie rest.
Uh, yeah.
Yeah, no, I love, I love people down there, because it's.
Oh, it's such a hazard.
Five feet out in the lane.
Jeez, I think, more like ten.
Some days, yeah.
Jeez.
No, it's good.
Thank you. Any other questions for? Did we have a screen? Thank you, sir. We appreciate your time and effort. Um, Benny, he's Denzel. Benny, oh. Benny. Benny. Where's Benny? I have Benny, where's Tony who's coming tonight? Gina, did you hear from him that he changed his mind and wouldn't be able to attend tonight?
Hi, um, I gave Carla Vinnie's email address and sent to, so she could send him the agenda, but that's, that's as far as I know. I'm not sure if, if she'd been in contact with him or not, but I do believe she sent him the agenda.
I'll, I'll send the council some information. He's basically looking at some kind of sponsorship from the cities for some kind of a podcast that he does, all, all, what's it, all travel organ, I think, so to, to try to promote in-market Depot Bay. Um, but I'll send you that information, I, I thought he, he said he was gonna be here tonight, so. But I'll send you his information, and then at the next meeting, if the council wishes to discuss this further with him, I'm sure he would be happy. But really, he's looking for the kind of sponsorship to produce these podcasts. Okay. Um, we'll go on to commission reports. Joyce?
All right. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I can't stand there.
Don't break it, it's very dirty.
Can you have a ready? Can we get closer? So, um, as you know, for months, we've been talking about this, um, emergency preparedance event. Now, I think y'all, I see there's a lot of flyers, so you're gonna do the flyer, which is gonna be great, we're gonna have a really good lineup. We discovered at our last meeting, even though we've talked about this for months now, we forgot to put it on the calendar and for the community hall, and so, um, someone else asked for that date and got it, so we, um, asked neighbors for kids to sponsor the location. Grateful that they would do that, so that's why the venue has changed, but the program looks pretty good. We've, um, we're, um, just trying to firm up some things, but it looks like we're gonna have a really good, um, crew. I had talked to, um, Northwest Natural Gas, and they could not come, but I met with her, and she gave us some really nice little giveaways. It's a little, you know, good stuff in it, and so we'll be able to give these, what's a little first aid kit, um, there's like a little flashlight with batteries in here, uh, something called North, uh, Natural Family Dispatch Plan. Uh, your safety involves first, and prepare a resource guy, so that was nice of them to do that, especially since, um, they were looking, they may have a bit, so they said that they could, you know, provide this for us. A lot of this is nice. And, um, we're going to have, um, our typical, um, event, we're gonna have a really nice lunch, we're gonna have door prizes. Uh, we have, um, a nice, really nice main door prize, it's a to-go bag, it's a really nice, expensive, nice one. And some other door prizes, and we're also going to be selling, um, uh, not door prizes, I'm sorry, um, to-go bags. And we're also going to have, um, a variety of different to-go bags for sale, we're gonna have like small dog ones, and small, or cat ones, and larger dog ones, and two-person kits, um, you know, four-person to-go bags, and we're gonna have ones for like, um, cold weather emergencies and things, which have a variety that we can also sell at our cost. So hopefully, if you guys can come, I think it'll be a good event. Um, we're still scheduled on Friday to meet here at City Hall to prove, um, to go over, um, to check out what we have in our caches. Um, I have a list of everything that was purchased, but we just wanna make sure we know where it is, or also, there are some things that we need to buy, like where it was sort of light, unwinding, and a couple of things that we still need to take care of for the two caches. And, uh, Stonebridge, looks like it's coming together, it's a meeting Kim gave us to us from AKS, um, engineering, and looks like we can get, uh, two, uh, twenty-four by eight caches there, which is great, or, um, storage, um, comics that's there, which is great, because it's big enough to where we can do this, and because we're so limited with where we can put a cache, it would be nice to have a really good supply line at that location. And then, um, thank you to Brady and his crew, and for Kim to organize it, we're, um, we had a painter come and put some, something called snow coat on top of our, um, comics cuts, and so that's for the help of any moisture that's gonna come through. And so we're, um, trying to make sure that whatever we have in there is protected. So that's all I have, any questions? Oops. Why did I remember? Okay, any questions? Okay, thank you, guys. And you know, if you're there, you're all invited to our, in little Friday, where we're bringing out stuff and counting here that you're really bored, that's the place to be. Thank you. Thanks, Joyce. Um, Scott, are you here, project is on the Energy Advisory Committee?
Sure.
And Kim put out the, uh, grant this afternoon before I stood over, I didn't have a chance to really read all of it, but it was really, it was intriguing.
Most of it is just from the climate application, so it's the same. The history and the, and the qualification, the equal rate, and that kind of stuff is the same. Um, we got letters from the Central Lintend, which is the important one. We got one from Senator Anderson, and then we got one, a bunch coming, and I understand that you've got a whole bunch of requests.
I did, I did.
Thank you for that.
Absolutely.
Um, the only thing I would have a report from last time is that in response to requests from the movie industry, the people who make the fuel cells have created four and eight kilowatt cars, portable fuel cells, so we'll be adding a few of those to our grant request to use as portable generators, and, and what they hire is basically just a fuel cell, you need to have your own fuel tank. So we're gonna get some more of those, and we'll be able to move those around, in fact, that's what we plan on putting in the community center as a portable car, uh, with, uh, a couple of tanks, so it'll provide some time, and then, um, it's kind of cool, because, you know, what they need was, you know, a movie site can be power, but you don't want fumes and noise. So that's what, that's what they created for, so these are perfect, uh, for that kind of situation. We'll be able to have reform around for other, other uses, including lending out to private businesses. Any questions?
Do you have costumes?
I do not.
It might be, uh, beneficial for you to go to the businesses and say, here's an opportunity for you, are you interested?
Um, I'll do that outside official city activity. There's, there's a bunch of us that are still working on, on generating hydrogen outside of this, combined with the city operations, and we'll take that to business, because it's gonna be more of a, uh, less of a city thing, and more of a, more headline.
Sure.
There are, there are two gentlemen that are ready to answer your questions.
Oh, Joel and Paul are here.
Joel and Paul both.
Hi, how are you, Paul?
Good evening, how are you?
Good.
Paul's in Louisiana, and, uh, and Joel's in North Dakota.
Hi, Joel.
Both PhDs, and they're both scientists, so you can fire away.
They were here in January. Good to see you.
Yeah. Very good. So we, we are just finishing up the grant application, as Scott said. Um, so, sort of the, as we've done the budget on it, what it turns out is that at City Hall, as the original plan showed, we'll have the emergency backup system for, for the, for the emergency ops center, which will include solar panels, and then the generation of hydrogen, which will then be our clean fuel for, uh, for the fuel cells. At the community center, uh, we'll have a, a unit to power that then too, to create, uh, backup shelter there. And Scott, we've made a little revision as we did it, we looked at it and saw the community center really has a peak load that gets closer to the twelve kilowatt, so we think we'll just put a stationary unit in there as we originally planned. And then there's enough, coming out to a budget of around, we're just finishing refining the numbers of around eight hundred to eight fifty, which is within the grant. Uh, under a million for the grant, we can also get then one of those portable generators that you alluded to, an eight kilowatt one. So really, creating an entire suite of a solution here, that the hydrogen is generated behind the parking lot right there at City Hall. The emergency backup generator is there for City Hall, this, some storage there in tanks, and then we also have the emergency unit at, at the community center to provide an emergency shelter, and then a portable unit that then you can move around, like you say. Used for emergencies, or also used for town events, right? If there's somewhere where you want quiet, uh, clean power, you know, you're having an event, you need microphones, you need, you need power of some source, you can just reel that portable generator there with a couple tanks. And so we've been working closely with Joel, who's one of the leading kind of producers and suppliers, and I don't know, all the tinkers and inventors of this kind of stuff, uh, to, to make sure that we have a system that works, and one that when we put that budget in for that grant, we'll be able to, to successfully build. And so we're, we're just in the final stages of, you know, dotting i's and crossing t's on that. And so, uh, if there's any questions, happy to hear it.
And if you have three questions, any questions? I'm excited, I, I just, I'm so excited, I just really hope that we can go forward with this and really make a difference. And, you know, and be able to share it with all of our neighbors that are in the same situation where we will be in Ireland, and they will be also, so uh, it would be nice to be able to share and, uh, go forward with this.
Absolutely, we're really hopeful that the Department of Energy will, will see that opportunity too, right? They like the planning grant, they like what they saw, I think what we're presenting is, is innovative, and sort of Depot Bay can be a real leader, like you say, Mayor Short, to really help, uh, neighboring communities understand that this can work, and it could really work well, and and sort of you can be on the, the leading edge of, of a really valuable technology for a community as well.
Oh, and one of the letters that I also see, side of support, was from the, um, tribe, and so the select, same damn tribe, so they would be a key uh, partner as well, to, that would benefit greatly from, from all of this, so we gotta work all together.
It also dovetails quite nicely with the state's energy strategy, which you published here a couple days ago.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And, um.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll be keeping our fingers crossed, thanks for all your hard work for us, we appreciate it. All righty.
Thanks.
Um, any other questions, or more like? I don't see anyone here from any of our other commissions, so I'll just go public comments, does anybody have a public comments to say?
Hi, can I state your name and where you're from?
Hi, um, my name's Laura Wilson, I work for Hampton Lumber.
Yes.
This is my colleague, Paul Luley, behind me, um, he also works for Hampton, he's our timberlands manager, and I work on forest policy and commerce affairs for the company.
Mm-hmm.
Um, we just wanted to come down here and introduce ourselves, uh, and give you a little bit of info about Hampton, and, um, I know you guys are working on some drinking water system updates, and, you know, some planning and stuff, and since we're an owner up here, um, just wanted to make sure you guys knew who we were, so, um, just real quick, I won't take up too much of your time, it's a time, I have a busy agenda, um, just thinking about Hampton, we've been in business for over eighty years, we're a family-owned company, uh, we have three sawmills in Oregon, two up on the north coast in Tolman and Warrenton, and one over in Loma. Um, we also own about a hundred and thirty thousand acres of timberlands in Oregon, um, which includes the Lincoln County and just up the hill here in Depot Bay. Um, so, uh, you know, I know that there's been some questions, I think, you guys are looking into some different grant funding and all that around drinking water, and we just really wanted to offer ourselves as a resource to you guys, as we're looking into that. Uh, we're always happy to answer questions about forestry and about operations we do, um, and so I, I hope that we are able to, uh, to work together going forward on any questions you guys might have. Um, we're gonna stay until the end of the meeting, we have our contact information, we can share as close, um, and hopefully we can just kind of go there, but that was really, I just wanted to introduce ourselves and make sure you know that we're around and available, um, whenever you guys want to.
Okay, we'll look forward to that afternoon meeting, thank you so much for being here.
Yeah.
Really appreciate you stepping up and.
Yeah.
Yeah, have your dinner, thanks.
Um, here we have no unfinished business. Wow. Bob, come on up. You are wanting to be joining our emergency funding, or emergency readiness committee. That's wonderful, thank you for stepping up, I love your background, can you tell us a little bit about us, and how you want to participate?
Well, I, I, uh, got my Bachelor's in mechanical engineering at OSU, uh, ended up working for Boeing for a few years, grew a Packard in a contract engineering company. Got my engineering license, I am currently retired, the license is still valid, but there's no need to, to really, really up that.
Okay.
Um, I also, in between HP and Corvus, I started a solar electric, uh, design and install company, so found that really interesting, and because of that background, the owner of Corvus, who's a contract engineer and contract manufacturing company, um, had a client that wanted to develop a new solar product, and he, he knew nothing about it. I knew him from business at HP, uh, they asked me if I would join their company. So that's how I got started with, with Corvus, but in the meantime, I, I did run solar options. And, you know, it, I just stepped in, into the lobby here last week, asked about volunteering, and, uh, this sort of just fell out on a table in front of me, I go, well, all of that's of real interest, uh, to me, so.
That's great, that's great. Any questions more?
Do you know the guys on the committee?
I, uh, I just met Scott, I sat, I, I sat in on their meeting last week, I, I was just like two hours later after, uh, I had walked in, uh, into the office asking about volunteering, oh, by the way, there's a meeting, exactly, there's one. into the office asking about volunteering. Oh, by the way, there's a meeting exactly this one. So yeah, I I may have sat in on that.
Seems like you'd be a good fit. It's not a lot in common.
Uh I it's sure does sound like it, yeah.
Wonderful. How long have you been here?
Uh we've my my wife has lived here. Uh she lived here about nine years ago for a few years. We had inherited a house on Pine Avenue. Uh we had rented it out. Now that I'm retired, we decided that we're going to try out Depot Bay. I've been for the last nine months, I've been updating new floors, new cabinets. So we haven't been living here until just just recently, but we've been in the community, working and eating because our kitchen's been uh torn up for the last nine months. But yeah, it's full time recently.
I've made a note that he's been a property owner since two thousand twelve. And I also learned that Mr. Pacific was also has also been a property owner for a while. So it says that's the resident, but might be something to look at, but they had property.
Yeah.
That's great.
Where were you living before here?
Albany.
Oh, okay.
Wonderful. Any other questions?
So this application has the same problem with the as the last one. And that is that it's it the ordinance says live here. It doesn't say property owner.
Right.
And so we made the uh the exception the last time as a non-voting member until twelve months of of actual residence.
Right.
Um
So January first, you would be on board?
Do we want to do that again for this?
I think we need to be consistent.
Agreed.
Yes.
Yeah, absolutely. Does everyone have a ballot?
Councilor, if you want to put in a chat your vote.
We need more volunteer opportunities. Give me a call.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, we need
Kim, I just put it in the chat. Did you get it?
Thank you.
You sure? Am I sure?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Councilor. I got it.
Thank you.
I need to find out who did not sign their name. I need uh everybody needs to sign their name because it needs to be in Depot Bay.
Is that one where there's just a name and not a signature?
There's just a check mark.
Oh.
Did everybody sign your ballots?
I'm pretty sure I usually, but I'm usually the attending.
Oh, Joel. Joel. Okay.
You you wrote your name.
Why not? Thank you.
Yeah.
You didn't care.
You got that.
Councilor Cannon is in trouble.
Well, I'm a
Okay, all of them. Okay, man, that's wonderful. Is there a vote to vary your motion to accept the ballots as you presented?
I made the motion. I mean, approve.
Okay.
Ballot's passed.
Okay, well, thank you. It's going to be a second to accept the ballots. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So what's your next meeting, Scott?
Monday, thanks.
On Monday, okay, well let's off down and we'll get we get to get you going. Um letter of authorization, I thought we'd done that for the construction grant.
This is the actual letter.
Oh, the actual letter, okay. Is there a motion to accept? Go ahead with this letter of authorization.
Okay. Motion to accept.
Okay, is there a second? It's going to move to second to go forward with the leather letter of authorization for the Infinity Renewable Energy Construction Grant Program Application. Is there any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh we have a resignation to accept. Is there a motion to accept Suzanne Sharp's uh resignation?
So.
So move to second to accept the resignation. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Alrighty. Um we have a quote on the seismic assessment assessment. Kim, do you want to go over that with us?
So we know that the City Hall has been designated as our emergency operations center and from what I understand, the basement is good, nice and solid. We don't know, I think, how the rest of the building and we don't really know for sure. So I originally and and I'm not sure, I just wanted to kind of get your thoughts on it. New part, I feel like we should get one. It is in the engineering. We can do it as part of the engineering budget. I originally wanted to apply for the seismic rehabilitation grant, but then when I talked to them, it's not for City Hall. It's for first responders, like the fire station and the police. And I said, not even if we're the ELC, she wouldn't let me argue it. She said, no, it doesn't apply to that City Hall. So um so I was trying to get it the 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 money along with it. So I kind of wanted to throw this at you and see what you thought about it, whether you think we have a great need for that right now. Do we want to just maybe force all of it next year, see if there's another grant opportunity comes up because there are always kind of grants for emergency stuff, but nothing to be said in on this one, so.
I think it's really important personally.
I do too, especially because the basement is almost completely done and we can start absolutely retrofitting it and getting it set up as their ELC. So I think a study like that, do we have any idea how much one would cost?
Yeah, it is fourteen thousand.
Oh, fourteen thousand, sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Just throwing it out there, uh TerraFirma will come and do a free estimate. They'll look and do everything and tell you exactly what you need for free, but
do you want me, I I'm happy to check. I'm sure it's about
We did the basement.
Oh.
There were, I was like
But it's all the whole, the whole building.
I've gotten good word on TerraFirma's basement. Should we give them a call?
I would definitely try to.
We give a shot, we give a shot people in the court.
It's free word, yeah. It's free, so they have excellent report of what they tried.
There's no great rush on this, so we can just say, well, let's try TerraFirma and if that doesn't work for some reason, I'll just come back and be after a meeting and let you know.
I think it's really good to be working into that. I think it should be done.
I'd rather not spend the money until the next budget, but if uh if the council thinks we need to, I would support it.
Okay.
I think we need to get the ELC up and going.
Friends, yeah, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, friend, yes.
Yeah, it's it I have a hard time hearing. Something about TerraFirma doing an assess- assessment for free?
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, it's part of their business plan. They'll come and do a free assessment and tell you exactly what you need and how much it will cost to retrofit.
So what what did you guys discuss about going forward with this fourteen thousand or doing the TerraFirma first?
We would do TerraFirma first.
Yeah, we would we would come back for another vote on the fourteen thousand?
Correct. If we need to at either the next meeting or whenever I know what we're getting from TerraFirma.
That would be great because um the assumption is that we'd upgrade this um City Hall to meet the seismic um deficiencies, but that might be cost prohibitive. So I really think we should get this assessment done before we make a determination of next steps.
That's what we're doing.
Absolutely. Is there also a chance that any grant we might be able to apply where in the future would want a fresh assessment instead of an older one?
Well, I don't know. They usually have like a three to five year, a lot of grants will say we'll take an assessment on something that's three to three to five year timeframe or seven years or I I know parks have one or the or have one for seven years. So it depends on each individual grant opportunity. So um I guess I want to make sure that the assessment that TerraFirma is about to be is not just an over overarching, but more because they're quoting a level one. And it's fourteen thousand for whatever they call their tier one. So it seems really hard for me to understand why a company would offer to do a good assessment for free on a business, but we'll check them out and then I will let you know where we're at on that because I could be wrong. It just seems like that's one heck of a business plan. So.
They want all the businesses fixing everything that's that's not
Right. This if it works for them, that's a let it let it work for them, but it just seems really weird to get a quote for this than to but I'll I'll double check it. I I I heard of them, but I didn't think about them as being something. So definitely check into it.
Didn't
Get a quote on my presentation.
I'm sorry, didn't TerraFirma do our um community center?
Yes, they did that.
Yeah, they did that also.
Okay, we'll come back with that then. Uh number five, we have uh the results of the executive session. Is there a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to move that the council approved the actions to be taken as outlined in the executive session.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's going to move to second to accept uh the actions of the executive session. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Did you say aye?
Oh, okay. Um motion carried. Thank you. Um city staff updates.
Uh before we move on, ma'am mayor, I have given you that second packet. We need a voting delegate for the need of more resources.
Oh, that's right, right.
Um so this is this is completely up to the council's wishes. At this point, only Council Watson has signed up to go to the conference, although every all the council can go, but um normally past they need the mayor goes and she is the voting delegate, but this year they've decided to open up a virtual option. But in order for somebody to participate virtually, we actually have a resolution that says we are designating the city our primary and then our alternate. And even though the mayor's not going, you know, she could just in case she decides she wants to go to the business meeting online and vote that way, otherwise it would be Councilor Watson as the alternate. Or you don't need to appoint anybody at all. Just means we don't get to vote at the business meeting.
I probably won't be going to the business.
You probably won't be, but I do this. So if the mayor wants to, so we would either need somebody else as an alternate to attend online or well, I could attend online. The business meeting, yeah, okay.
Where's it at?
Portland.
Portland, that's right.
When when is it?
Uh second through the fourth of October.
Thank you. I knew it was coming up.
And it's at the Marriott waterfront hotel, the conference and very good to stay.
Yes, and we'll sign you if you want if you decide you want to go. I think there's still openings. We'll sign you. Hotel normally fills up fast.
I've been to a few of their conferences and they're really good. You enjoy it.
But why can't you volunteer?
Okay. So do we want to um put down uh Mayor Short as the primary and Council Cannon as the alternate?
That's fine, but
Okay.
Then I just need a motion to approve Resolution five ninety one twenty five with updates.
Certainly.
The resolution identifying a voting delegate and one alternate voting delegate to represent the city at the wake of our cities two thousand and twenty five annual business meeting, which is their one hundredth and here again, first we write it. Any discussion on the motion?
Do we have a second?
Oh, sorry. Sorry, still second. We move to second to accept the resolution as stated five ninety one dash twenty five. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, that's it. Now, staff updates.
Well, I want to tell you that we are not having fun over at our wastewater treatment plant and our water treatment plant and we had a issue this weekend at our community hall. We're having great, we did not get a chance for Brady and I to sit down. So I can update you about some of the pumps you learned about at the last meeting. You saw we what we're doing there. I have uh another leak pump repair. That's what I'm having to do at the next meeting once I get my quotes. It's a lot of expenses going on.
Yeah.
So Brady, we and
So yeah, there's two things that they the the squeeze press, which squeezes the water out of biosolids that goes to the dome. So the pump went out in that. It's just really worked hard, but it's not horribly expensive for that. But the gearbox is expensive for the grid removal and that takes the everything from eggshells to coffee grounds, anything that's a heavy grid in the sewer, we have to hold it down. And it separates that. So the gearbox that runs that broke down.
And that works very hard because there's a lot of grit in what we throw down.
Yeah, residential wastewater, you know, from restaurants and halls. It's a whole different bit of industrial stuff. Some things. But um other than that, you know, just yeah, it's so sometimes it's all pumps one year and some sometimes it's 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 drives, you just kind of
So what what happens? I mean, does the system shut down?
Um well, we're technically manually overriding stuff and having to do stuff manually until having to override, especially with biosolids, I'm going to pump, I have to keep resetting it. I we get one order.
Oh, yeah.
That's something you don't really need to have redundancy to because you never know, it could last for fifteen years or so. Um there's options to get around it. We can still process biosolids, it's just basically
The one item for this screw press, the pump, that is seventy five hundred, that's within my daily on my pay. So that one we could go ahead and do, but this next one is over eleven thousand.
Yeah, the gearbox.
So that one is not under the control. But technically, we have money in the budget for pumps, but I'm afraid we're gonna run out of it if these things keep working.
Yeah, we have to
We have contingency plans.
We may have to, or they may not get to do another project that's under that. And they have to be able to do something if it can wait another year.
And it's a pool item.
It is a pool item, but so so um then then tell them about the community hall.
For the community hall, um we had some moisture behind the toilet and the lead bathroom. Um and just started out with one of the janitor maintenance guys said he had scraped some um wet, like kind of something growing behind the toilet. So one of the operators wanted to look at it and we've got a water leak in the wall.
Oh, no.
And it'd be going on for a while because it's not sheet rock. It's uh um lac- it's it's small hole, it's a fl- fl- plaster and uh so it's quite a bit of damage. I have some photos of it, but it's shut down until we we're going to try to get it up by next week, but we have a dehumidifier and we tore all the road out concrete, dry rot. So we're going to treat what we got wet with um preservative and then try to get it the plumbing fixed and then get the wall back so we can run it out. But just another because we were able to get some reflectors down. Um the traffic slowed down up on Main Street. We're putting the reflectors in in the middle of the line. Um it it the lane really is quite narrow through where the new sidewalk is. So we put reflectors in that are only three and a half inches wide rather than a double yellow line, which would make the lanes even smaller. So reflectors have worked um on Upper Bayview and past the community hall. So we're gonna stick with that maybe through the S turns. Um they stay put for quite, you know, sometimes in the winter, trucks will break them those, but they seem to be a a good option in the middle of like peons or line. And they're really well seen at night. So when the folks go down Bay, they kind of knows what we've done. We're gonna try to straighten them out. There's some older ones in there. And we're kind of working on that project. The other one was the flag crossings. The boys got those uh mounted to some existing signs, but we had to put some posts in and and uh some containers for, we we looked at other things we're doing and because the first lot was put a bucket down with sand and then but somebody fell on that and it injured that. So we had to keep it up and try to do the codes for those things. So um a lot of folks don't know, they're they're looking at them thinking it may be a project that ODOT's doing, but we've got some placards that are going to go on the holders that say uh Furt Street Crossing or Financial Crossing.
I did have a back ask y'all hawks about it. They told me probably only about thirty percent use them. They think a lot of them are like the adults are like, this is a school crossing. But so he says it was from the mayor. He said, I use the one I go across, but they get it because their spine was down. And so they're just keeping up with the recent thing. It's about thirty percent and they said that they didn't lose any of them got stolen or thrown away. So we thought, oh, let's give a shot here.
Maybe we could put a little thing on there that says please use me for
Yeah, that's kind of right. We're gonna uh we have the label machine. It's a Archer's labels. We'll just put something on that.
And grab the flag and cross it.
I'll be using that one, just like that.
It's funny because if there's a group, there's always like the one guy that'll grab him and he'll wave the ball and cross, but you know, most folks are using some some people really don't know. They they almost look like there's like something ODOT would put up for roadwork or something. They're not even sure.
Well, I I I probably wouldn't use it. So I'm one of those ones that probably would not use it. I would just step out and say, okay.
Yeah.
And then the candlesticks there on Main Street?
Um
That you're gonna put on the parking?
Um we're gonna paint that. I've I've got a lot of uh uh problems with the parking lot. Um, we're gonna paint that, I've I've got a lot of uh uh problems with the parking lot owner that we can talk to the engineer, maybe we can visit, maybe with him, but um we're gonna start by painting that fur yellow in before we put those in, because I don't I don't wanna have some lawsuit and have, because there's no current survey. So um I might take the step of painting that fur yellow first and then we'll go with that.
Any other questions?
Kim said something about water treatment as well, what's going on with the water treatment?
That was last week, that was last week, we had some water treatment pumps, which one's there, I forget which one.
Yeah. Uh, the one of the pressure pumps in the.
That wasn't on our table.
Station, but yeah, it was another, it was a Vista Terrace, uh, pressure pump went out.
That's right.
Um, which is uh, I don't know if you folks know or Jack Brown, it's it's called Vista Terrace, it's up Carson off Williams Avenue. Um, there's some houses that are built on cliffs up there and we have to provide pressure to their homes, so probably maybe six houses that are on that pump station, but it went out, we had uh alarm system let us know, but it was it was probably didn't work, because it's a tough area to get up at too.
Yeah, but they got it fixed right away, so they won't.
But we have to get it, if someone's that goes, then maybe another pump for redundancy and then Rocky Creek. Um, we have three Rocky Creek pumps, but they're all parts of them, like the pump will go out, the motor box ran on them, rewound, we have to take them to Portland and get other parts, but hopefully if we get Rocky, we have one running, it's working fine, but we need to get a redundant pump for Rocky too, especially with the drought kind of stated. It it's a very healthy source water, so it would be, you know, a lot of folks are in drought, there's a lot of wells in Lincoln County that are going dry. So we're really fortunate to have um backup, yeah.
Backup. Very, very fortunate. And then are we still paving the lot, the parking lot under?
Uh, don't wanna, don't wanna call.
The harbor is servicing? Yeah, we will be, yes, but this is not quite done yet, but I will be getting the boat driveway, should we get that going?
Oh. Oh, in time. Yeah, we got it, we got an older, we're getting a current um quote, right?
I don't think.
So we got an old.
I don't think. And like after.
Probably is different, they might just say it's the same.
Yeah. So the note says work will happen in September, it's not in November.
No, the the launch, the launch tram is still pretty busy right now, so. Some of that ocean keeps behaving itself like it's been.
The salmon season, it looks like it'll go through the end of September.
Yeah, we don't wanna impact stuff like that, so.
Oh, really? Okay, any other questions on?
I could have just one thing for you, um, do you, do you guys remember the Lincoln County?
Okay.
I guess it was like, remember when Penelope Kazmerik came and she wanted to talk about that res- resup- supportive? Oh. Um. She's looking at getting it going, it was regarding water, um.
Wait, from Toledo?
Lincoln County. Is is she from Toledo, so that's Penelope Kazmerik, does that name ring a bell?
Yeah.
I know who she is, but she, I I haven't seen her here in person, but we had a presentation.
Right.
Where I think her organization.
She did, and we signed a resolution saying that we would participate, Lincoln County Water System Alliance, yeah.
But that we wouldn't pay any money, remember they asked us for money and we were, we said no.
Right, well, this is the, they've been, this, they came back less than a year ago to get us to participate. Now she wants, they wanna start actually doing something, they wanna start putting together the bylaws and putting together, they wanna have a board, that they wanna have a primary from the city, from each city that's participating, and an alternate from the city. I assumed I would probably be the primary, but I wanted to find out if the council, anybody on the council wanted to be the alternate. Okay, all right, so um I will send you some dates that she's looking at to see if you're available for the first meeting, they would like the primary and the alternate to attend both the first meetings, everybody.
Do we know where it is?
Uh, she can't, they haven't said that yet and to be honest, I have a feeling it was like in two or three months.
Okay.
So um, but for right now, I'll just, I would have told where I wanted to confirm who else just wanted to participate, so. Okay, and then what, we'll come back and tell you what we're working on. Thank you, Councilwoman.
Can I ask a couple of questions on the EHS report?
Sure.
Yeah, yes, absolutely.
Oh, the the question for her?
Yes, so there there was a line item under wastewater master plan.
Yes. Yes.
Specifically talking about flow monitoring. Do we not know what our flow is? I'm just wondering why we'd wanna spend forty eight thousand dollars on this flow monitoring and we're gonna do a whole master plan or a whole updates, whatever that is that we're gonna do with wastewater and and trying to to do whatever it is that we need to do with wastewater, like plan, a silly plan.
Because the type of flow monitoring that we need, we don't, we need more in-depth for of than we have to do the facilities plan.
We can check.
That's gonna be part of the requirements is to have this flow monitoring, it needs to be more than just, needs to be in-depth, more detailed than what the guys.
In areas of neighborhoods.
It's right, in areas that they don't normally monitor, like outfalls that they don't, what, no, like.
Yeah, outfalls at South Point and then um in 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 North Point against South Point.
Yeah.
And then um other neighborhoods too, in in areas where we're getting high INI, we're trying to to see what dry river flows aren't prepared and wet river flows. And then there's a farm that you can use to to see what percentage we're we're getting high INI along with uh, you know, when.
He said this will really help us also with figuring out ultimately where we go with money and, you know, as part of really getting into knowing what the flow is and what it looks like. Um, I asked Brady if he really needed this, if he really wanted this done and he said absolutely. In fact, he said we would wait on something because he really wanted to make sure this got done.
Yeah, it was the, it was the INI dog.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna.
We could not do the, we could do the TV work this year and the flow monitoring in the middle of of TV and repairs.
Right. Yes.
And then if there's any serious repairs, we could hit those right after the new budget.
Right.
Okay. And then the second one that I had was um the Collins and Collins parking lot.
Mm-hmm.
That was already presented to us, we had some discussion about it. Um, it says here that the parking lot concept plan is with the city, but I don't think that we as a council have any action items or we don't know what we're doing with this.
Well, I can explain where we're at on that, because what the council had wanted to do when we have that work session was they wanted to gravel it, then put markings down, not do the expense of painting it. Well, I since found out that that would be against our code, our code says we have to pave it. So at this point, we're are a holding pattern deciding what council, I'm, I should have mentioned that brought it up too soon, but we can have more of a discussion about what you wanna do with it, we either do nothing or we actually budget to get paved and do all that work that that he presented as the concept plan.
Does our, does our code require that we do the sidewalks and the curves and the paving and?
Yes.
So all of that has to be done as part of our work.
Yes, if we do, if we do any paving or do create that parking lot, we have to do all that.
If it.
But some of that stuff is also ADA requirements, you know.
It's not, yeah. The sidewalk would be just a big apron entry and um we already have a storm stored and pieced together for to arrange catch base, that's already installed. Um, so it'd be paving, um, maybe some burns and then and then the sidewalk would be one long apron in the front.
And then landscaping.
Yeah, landscaping, yeah, it'd fit about fifty feet.
Okay.
I can present the concept to you at the next meeting again, if you wanna look at it again.
Well, we already have it.
You do, but I don't know if you wanna put it as an agenda item and decide what to do with it.
Refresh my memory, what is the zoning of that property?
It's.
I think it's.
I think it's R four.
I. Let's see.
I think it's commercial.
I think that's what I was gonna say too, Council Rec, cause I thought it was commercial.
I didn't think it was commercial because you couldn't put vacation rentals there, that was the reason.
Yeah, I think it's, it's commercial down Williams until it doesn't have any crossroads, so past Clark, it's commercial.
Let's see, it is zone, I thought that Carla told me it was commercial, but. Oh, no, Council Misselle is right, it's R four.
So do you need a conditional use permit to park a lot there?
Probably.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so are we going through all the steps?
I dance up to the council as to what you wanna do, because it is, do we wanna go through that process this year? Do we wanna wait till next year? Do we wanna add a new budget? What do we wanna do?
Sell it. Just saying.
Um, wait.
Thirty nine thousand dollar subsidy value.
Yeah, there's not.
Go ahead, Fran. I don't wanna.
It's what, ten parking spaces, I think is what.
Go to that expense right now with all the money.
I think that's what he's saying.
Yeah, it was a small number of parking.
You thought you could get that if we could use the uh, if we could say that the ADA parking spot up on the Rockfish parking lot was contiguous with this one, but he doesn't know that's the case. We'll lose more if we have to actually put ADA spots up there.
Excuse me?
Can I have a question?
Yes.
Yeah, um, our code does not require paving, it requires um areas for standing and maneuvering a vehicle shall have durable and dustless surfaces improved adequately for all weather use and shall be adequately maintained.
I will double check this, but I'm going off of what Carla said and she knows the code in parking very well, that I'll.
Yeah, I think it's um.
Gravel is not.
All parking lots, parking years shall be hard surface pays, I'm sorry, that's ordinance three, number three nineteen, I'm sorry, it was amendments to chapter one fifty two, sorry.
Okay, yes.
I had one other question if we, before we.
Yes, go ahead, Fran.
But not on this topic, so if anybody wanted to continue talking about this.
That's fine.
Um, I had a question on the engineering report that I'm a little bit concerned with on uh number fourteen about secondary access to the hills. I'm not sure that was shown in their plans, but in any case, I think it looks like that the Boiler Bay property owners are requesting water service as a concession and properties are outside the UGB, Creed will look at DLCD implications. We have a very strong and important policy that does not allow the extension of city water and sewer services beyond our UGB, so I'm very, very concerned about this. So I would like to have updates and no action until we we know, we know more about this.
Uh, this is something we definitely would not take action on with staff, it would come before the council if we were ever gonna consider that. Doing the water services is not a staff level approval. He's gathering the information and we also have to look at, so just because our code is not up to the standards it should be as far as clear objective standards, it still means we have to need that and that's just what he's checking, is just to make sure, do we get to make that call? And with all the changes they made to the UGB process, we're not sure, so. But if if we even get to that point, counselor, it will come to the council, it will not be a planning decision only, it will not be a staff decision only, it will be a council decision.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Affirmation, Joe, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a um reference, um, we talked about a lot about this parking lot, this this land. Um, I would like to say, um, I think we should list all the pros, list all the cons before we really spend any more time, effort, money or whatever, do a feasibility study, if you will, of some sort. Uh, the general consensus is it's not worth it. But to confirm that and make everyone happy, I think that would be something we may wanna talk about in the future.
Okay.
My suggestion.
Kinda. You mean just the council not to go with, right?
Yeah, to kinda get a feel for what we're talking about, so when people ask us about it, we have a consensus and we have a plan of some sort.
Okay, so is that we should put on a work session? Do you know?
Should we do that next week? We have fifteen minutes for, we could do a half an hour. Do we have hour about?
I I guess I'm trying, I wish to have next week, where we do.
On October seventh, so next council meeting.
Next meeting.
Yeah.
Please.
So when you say a feasibility study, what?
Not feasibility, just.
Should we have an in-depth discussion about the Collins?
Yeah.
Got it, so add it as an agenda item?
Yeah.
That's what I'm understanding.
In the five thirty time zone of the, the work we'll do is a five thirty work session at five thirty to six.
The two items, this parking lot and your.
My visual?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
What was the other issue? Parking lot, what?
And my list, Council Rec, my.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Um, any other questions for the staff? Closing public comments, do we have any public comments this evening? Mm-hmm. Council comments, anyone have council comments? I'm hoping everyone will hope, hopefully join us for this, they asked there, Bruce, uh, it's gonna be a wonderful day and uh, I say good affirmation coming our way.
I had a comment, or question, I guess, what's happening with the harbor user fee ordinance?
Uh, because I've spent a significant amount of time getting, working on the twenty twenty one audit, I haven't nagged the attorneys on whether or not they have a report for me, but we'll definitely have it come to the next council, next council meeting. That along with it, it's gonna be a busy council meeting, cause you're gonna have the short-term rental stuff as well.
What about the RF agreement with the attorney?
That you've already approved, that just is allowed.
Okay, is that?
No, no, we'll have to, I'll finish my meetings, but I've been really trying to get the twenty twenty one so that they could start the audit so we can get it done sooner rather than later.
Any other comments? Okay, we have our journey.
Good night, everybody, I'm Ryan, thank you.
Good night.